We'll have roll call, please.
Congressman Miller?
Yes.
Sylvie?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Phillipsen?
Yes.
Mayor Reese?
Yes. Citizens comments. Elizabeth is here. Welcome.
Here.
Welcome.
I guess it's nice. Citizens Hall has a nice pregame. I'm just gonna pass that down. And also paper copies of the presentations. So you can pass that down as well. So, um. Thank you, Mayor, and everyone else. I appreciate the opportunity to come here. I think most of you know me, but for perhaps the one person in the audience who doesn't. My name is Elizabeth Wayfull, and I'm an attorney lobbyist with Flaherty and Hood, and I'm here on behalf of the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. More than a hundred cities, I think we're like up to 110, 111, working together on issues that really matter to greater Minnesota. Local government aid and property taxes are probably, you know, our top item, but we also work on economic development, annexation, and land use, transportation, environment, and energy, as well as labor and employment. Um, yeah, well, this was a session. You know, it was, you know, I think going in, you know, it started January 31st, lots of, lots of high hopes. You know, we had a historic budget. And it was supposed to be a bonding bill year, and there was a lot, there are a lot of needs out there in greater Minnesota. You know, we're trying to figure out, you know, how to get matching funds for the federal infrastructure program. Lots of unspent ARPA money that had to get distributed, and lots of resources, you know, to address the needs outside of, you know, across the state. And I'm sure as a city council, you're familiar with a lot of kind of what's out there and what needed to be happening. But, you know, there were also a lot of challenges. You know, even though the pandemic has sort of moved into a different phase, we still were dealing with a hybrid environment. Some legislators, you could meet in person, some you couldn't. Redistricting brought interesting challenges with legislators finding out mid-year that they might be facing a member of the opposite party, or worse, one of their own. And then election years, especially big ones like this, always make people act a little goofy. That combined with the ongoing political polarization. And unfinished business from last year made it a big challenge, you know, and, you know, it was one of those things, like I described this year as like, you know, big opportunities, but opportunities squandered. And you don't need me to know, I'm sure, tell you, I'm sure you know by now, but, you know, even though we had all of the conditions there for a really good legislative session, kind of those, you know, we actually had legislators get close on many bills. You know, they finished an environment bill, they finished a job bill, they finished a tax bill. But they just could not get the whole package together and to get it across the finish line. So a little disappointing or a lot disappointing, I think, for many of us. For the CGMC itself, we had some big goals this year. Given the circumstances, you know, the goals weren't that outrageous. But we were pushing, you know, LGA, two big pieces there. One was to update the LGA formula. We find that, you know, usually around the time the census happens, but every, you know, seven to 10 years, we need to take a look at the formula, make sure it really still works for our cities. So we wanted to update the formula, put more money into the formula, because that's always really important, you know, to help cities keep up with inflation and whatnot. Wanted to push an infrastructure-focused bonding bill, do some more on childcare, as well as on city streets. So I'm just gonna talk a little bit about each of those areas and then open it up for questions. But, you know, I guess just that little picture here before I move on. We did take advantage of the hybrid environment, you know, it was one of those things that we, you know, did webinars, did press conferences virtually as well as in person. And I would say one of the good things, you know, to have come out of the last couple of years legislatively was that ability to testify remotely. And honestly, for folks from greater Minnesota, that's really helpful. I was really able to bring in a lot of my mayors and city staff and whatnot that otherwise couldn't have made it to the Capitol. I mean, obviously, being in person is great, but it's nice now when I have that option. So we really took full advantage of that. But let's talk about LGA. So we, like I said, you know, it's just, it was time to redo the formula. Legislators at all expressed a lot of interest in doing that, and so we started meeting with the other city groups. Really us, you know, the league, and then metro cities and small cities were also involved to some extent, nonpartisan staff, as well as staff from the Department of Revenue. You know, the thing that we really do, though, is that we bring a lot of analytical capabilities to it to make sure that when the formula is being changed or when you tweak the factors, that our cities, you know, that it helps our member cities. And we have an in-staff analyst, Anya McDonald, real nice woman. I don't know if you guys have met her, because she joined us during, right before the pandemic started, as well as Jeff Van Wyken, who's been working with us for a good two decades, and we bring him in on contracts. So they really helped sort of sort through this, make sure everything worked out okay. You know, we kind of looked at the existing formula, looked at what worked, what didn't, and started looking at possible need factors to come up with a, you know, a new proposed formula. You know, and the formula was somewhat similar to what we saw before. It still, you know, did that evaluation of what a city's capacity is versus what its needs, continued to split cities into population categories. And I think the biggest change then was sort of the new formula need factors. But overall, the new formula really, I mean, all of our cities, their amount they would have been receiving would have gone up under the formula, or at least held steady. There are a couple of cities, like if you look at Detroit Lakes, for example, because of the way their city has grown, their LGA had actually been shrinking, but this would have put them back on a more of a level playing field. So it was a good formula. Unfortunately, again, one of the many things that didn't get across the finish line, the House tax bill did include our formula proposal, plus more money in it for LGA. The Senate did not, but the final conference committee did include some more money for LGA, but no formula update. But again, more money doesn't matter in a conference committee bill when they don't pass it, unfortunately. So that was, again, extremely disappointing, to say the least. But if you look at the next page, you can kind of see what that would have meant for more. So you folks would have gone up by at least 200,000, you know, if we would have gotten the new formula and the additional money out of the legislature. Even with the tax conference committee report, it wouldn't have been quite as big of a jump, but you still would have seen, I think, at least 80 million more if they would have gotten that tax bill done. So very disappointing for our cities at a time when you could probably use it. Another thing that we spent a lot of time in, and this is probably where I spent most of my effort, was on an ambitious water and wastewater package. We worked together with, we actually decided to, you know, form some partnerships on this, and we worked with a couple of labor unions, the Association of General Contractors, and an environmental group to propose a really ambitious package, $300 million for the PFA for water and wastewater. Also, ongoing money for the Point Source Implementation Grant Program, which really helps when cities have new limits in their wastewater permits. Trying to get money for technical assistance grants. We're finding that cities of all sizes are having, you know, they need more help, sort of planning out what does their infrastructure look like for the next decade or more. And then the other thing that was new for us working on it, but we are probably going to be working on it more the next couple of years, was trying to get money towards the lead pipe problem. And I don't know if that's an issue here. I know that a lot of cities in Minnesota are facing it, but the EPA is requiring all cities to inventory. Blaine knows what is required. He'd have to have your.
Yeah, we started talking about.
Yeah, you have to have your lead pipes inventoried by October 2024. That's not going to be easy. You know, I had the mayor of Pipestone testify on it a couple of times, and he's just like, we don't have property records going back, you know, for a lot of our early buildings in the House. So, you know, we pushed for and got money actually in the Health and Human Services Bill for that, but again, yet another area where they didn't wrap it up. So without a bonding bill, you know, a lot of this will have to wait. And it really was, you know, I've been doing this for quite a while, and folks before me have been doing it even longer. And I don't think any of us can remember when we've had a bonding bill session where we haven't seen a bonding bill. I mean, we literally did not see a proposal out of the House or the Senate. And that, again, extremely frustrating. We know they were working on it behind the scenes, but nothing ever materialized. And we're seeing a lot of, especially a lot of cities that are facing, you know, like having to do their wastewater, drinking water facilities this year, a lot of problems there. We will, again, continue to push on that. We'll, you know, I mean, it is something we are not giving up on, but it is, it was disappointing. Childcare continues to be an issue throughout greater Minnesota. It's probably exacerbated over the last couple of years. And we were happy to see the House, you know, the House included some money in their bill. But again, the jobs bill didn't move anywhere, and also no bonding bill sort of meant that it held back our proposal on the Greater Minnesota Childcare Facility Grant. You know, and I'm bringing these things up because even though they didn't happen, it's sort of a, you know, we did make progress on a lot of stuff. They were getting into bills, they were getting into conference reports, and so at least we're hoping it sets the stage for the next year. You know, same with housing. The Senate included $10 million in the workforce homeowner, homeownership program that we had proposed in their bill, but they never got a conference committee report done. And again, no bonding bills, so no grants for the housing infrastructure program. Broadband, probably one of the few bright spots this session, with money coming into the border-to-border program, as well as money coming in from the federal government, and sort of money being allocated. So at least we're seeing some more progress in that area, but, you know, it's, it's, it, we need them to move forward next year on that. And then, again, city streets also kind of fell by the wayside due to this happening, and that's, you know, we are pushing on both large and smaller cities, you know, aid, because we know how important that is to cities, your property taxes can't handle everything. So it's really important to get money into those. But, you know, in terms of sort of what happened, it was really, you know, even going into that last week, we had some small hope that they might be, actually, I shouldn't say small hope. We were like, I think a lot of us were hopeful they could get it done. About, you know, six days before session ended, the leaders came forward and said, here's our targets, go make your bills. And we started seeing the bills roll out. They got the jobs done on Friday, they got the taxes done on Saturday, but they had to get it all done by midnight. And there were, you know, the way the leaders had put it together, they said it's a package deal, you're gonna do all of them. And, you know, Sunday, we started seeing things fall apart. And, you know, by Monday morning, it was apparent they weren't getting anything done. You know, we've continued to call, other groups have continued to call, you know, pushing like you need to come back in and get this done in a special session. As it got further away, it became clear that wasn't going to happen at least before the primary, because there was a lot of contested primaries out there. We'll see if there's any movement afterwards, but it was a really disappointing collapse, and I think it means that we are gonna have to push these folks even harder next year. Because, I mean, it was frustrating when we got so close on so many of these issues, that they just, they couldn't get it past the line. And kind of looking ahead to next year, it's gonna be different. We are expecting at minimum 47 new legislators, and that would be assuming that every legislator who's incumbent won their seats back, and that almost never happens. So, you know, we're talking 50 or more new people. So we could be seeing changes in legislative control in either body. You know, there's competitive governor's race, and that's gonna be then looking at a budget year next year. So a lot of this stuff will be back on the table. So, you know, we're gonna be starting now and in the fall, you know, starting to educate candidates, legislators, and, you know, hitting the ground running and really laying the groundwork so we can kind of tackle and push this forward, because, you know, these are really important issues. It's not gonna be going away. And honestly, this is how we get it done, is working together and pushing on these things. So, a couple of events just coming up, you know, I guess I should have updated this. Our city conference is tomorrow. We'll be driving to Red Wing tomorrow, but we do have our, you know, if you want to come to something closer by, our fall conference is gonna be up in Alexandria, over at Arrowood again in November. And then our Legislative Action Day is going to be in January. That's usually our best-attended event. And if you've never been to anything before, especially next year, when we're gonna have a lot of new legislators, it would be a really good one to come to. And then for next year's summer conference, we are gonna be in Thief River Falls. So Mayor Holmer is taking over. That's not why the city was chosen, but, you know, we try to move it around different parts of the state. So their bid was accepted, and we'll be going to Thief River Falls. So wanna thank you. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your participation. I mean, the CGMC has been able to get a lot of stuff done over the years because we have active members. You know, Blaine's always been just such a huge help to me, you know, the entire time I've been working here at the firm on a lot of issues. And it just really sort of active, you know, city staff, city council members, mayors, it just really does make a difference. So thank you, thank you for all you folks do. So, a lot of information, anything, questions I can answer?
Elizabeth, I have a question. One of the areas that you kind of have on here is environment and energy. And I do have a question with regards to solar panels. Wondering if there's any discussions taking place with regards to disposal of the solar panels themselves. Because as you know, a lot of the solar panels that were put out there now are probably getting close to the end of their life. And I understand there's some metals in the materials that they use to make the solar panels, selenium and cadmium and cabium. And I guess the concern that's been raised is when you, when you take these panels and you just dispose of them and they sit, they're fine. But the minute you start crunching them or compacting them, those metals get released, and it can get into your water system, and it's toxic. So I was just wondering, you know, we obviously are, you know, getting into the solar business here, and I'm just wondering if there's any discussions out there that you've been a part of that, talking about how that's gonna be dealt with down the road?
Well, I would say, yes, there are discussions. Yes, I've been part of them. Part of that is less the CGMC, but I also work for a group of municipal utilities that, actually, a number of your cities that have power through MRES. I work with MRES. And so it is an issue that comes up in the Energy Committee, and it is something that I don't, you know, it is, it is something that is starting to get discussed, and also at the MPCA, they have a landfills division that looks at that, you know. And as you may know, I don't know if you've had these problems out here, you know, like right now, for example, we're dealing with cities who are experiencing problems like PFAS leaching out of their, you know, their landfills. And so the MPCA is trying to be more, I don't know if I would say thoughtful, or, you know, they're looking ahead at that. So there are discussions about that. So it is definitely happening because it is, you know, any of those sort of things that, you know, your landfills aren't anticipating. You know, and I can't remember what the percentage of Minnesota, a lot of Minnesota is groundwater, not, you know, not surface water. So it's definitely something. There was, I believe, there was even a legislative proposal around sort of, I can't remember if it was a pilot program or just some regulations, but the MPCA has actually been pushing on that.
Yeah, I know. It's, you know, I think initially everybody was, you know, excited, and I know there's a benefit to solar, obviously. You know, it's all a stuff. You have to kind of be somewhat forward-thinking too, while you're gonna deal with that down the road. So appreciate that.
Yep. Any other questions? Anybody want to know anything about wastewater? Small area.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I think your output on here was more than what the legislature did this year.
Well, thank you. It is kind of a, I'm honestly a goofiest city reporter I've ever had to give, like, let me tell you what they did not have done. But I promise you, next year, it's gotta be better. So, we hope. So, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Elizabeth. Any other citizen comments? We have no public hearing tonight. We have reading and approval of minutes from July 12th.
I'll move approval of the regular minutes from July 12th.
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And we have the same condensed version.
I'll move approval of the condensed version of the minutes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And at this time, I will make a motion to add an item D under Consent Agenda, Temporary Liquor License for American Legion for the Beer Gardens.
I'll second.
Any discussion? That was emailed to you this afternoon. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, having done that, I will move approval of the Consent Agenda consisting of the Audit of City Bills, Revenue and Expenditure Report, Tree Board Minutes from a couple of dates, and the temporary liquor license that we added. May I motion to approve the Consent Agenda items? Thank you. Any discussion or questions on any of the items?
Just line 67, that, I see we received our saucer at East Side Park, and there's an amount there of $5,715. Was that, that's obviously part of what we approved, right, Blaine, or was that something we added later? Because I think originally didn't, wasn't our approval about package, wasn't it around 50 grand comes to mind? And I wondered if that was part of that, or if this is.
Yeah, I think that one just.
Part of it, it was backwards part, that came later.
Yep. Okay. All right, that answers my question. Thanks. It looks good, by the way. I like it.
It really does. And it's almost always busy.
Yeah. Gets used a lot.
Mayor, do you still need a second on this motion? Or did you, did you make the motion?
I made the motion, and I do have a second.
Okay.
Any, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. This is Request Communications. We have an appointment of Alyssa Stride to the Park Board, and I will make that a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. This is Request Communications. We have an appointment of Alyssa Stride to the Park Board, and I will make that a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Resolution Authorizing Fund Transfers.
This transfer of the $150,000 that we put into the 2022 project out of the stormwater admin that was to help pay for stormwater in the project that's going on. So that was part of the package that we did.
I will move approval of the resolution authorizing the fund transfer.
I will second.
Any discussion? I will have roll call vote on the resolution, please.
Congressman Waller?
Yes.
Sylvie?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Phillipsen?
Yes.
Mayor Reese?
Yes. City Managers Report and Recommendations.
I'll just touch on a couple of things here. They have been painting the handicap parking spots in the various parking lots. We went around, figured out where we needed parking spots to include along our road tracks, and we ordered about eight signs that'll be going up. So actually, there'll be a handicap spot down here on the end by the community center, because it's the nearest point for somebody to come up on, onto the sidewalk. And that should take care of all of our parking areas that we have responsibility for. Couple of other things. We're starting to notice some Dutch elm popping up that has to be taken care of, including some of the trees that we have in our boulevards. And they continue to work on the storm-damaged trees, trimming and doing all those kind of things. And you can see where now they're grinding the stumps and doing that kind of work. And that's pretty much it, unless you have any questions about anything.
I have a question on the sidewalk for the parks. Is that the one, where is that sidewalk?
There's a bunch of them. So there's some sidewalks in Wells Park to the concession stand and to the.
That's what I was thinking, because aren't we talking about building a new concession stand there adding on? And do we want to put a sidewalk to an old, the bathrooms, which are causing problems?
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, once, once we figure out what we're gonna do for a concession stand, whatever the sidewalk is, we'll just have to adjust it a little bit, but that's gonna be probably at least a year before we do that. And, I mean, you're not talking about a huge increase in size of the building. You know, and these sidewalks are gonna run up to where the property is now, so I.
Okay, so it's not like you're gonna pour them, and then where you, I mean, so that's gonna be taken into account, the new concession?
Yeah.
Or the new bathrooms, and, okay.
Yeah, and then the only thing is during the park board meeting, we talked about there's one more little stretch of sidewalk that probably should be done from out on Eagles Complex up to the JV Field. Because there's, I mean, there's just nothing running up there. And, you know, it kind of does a really good job of kind of having the people go the right direction. And if you're driving vehicles up there to do maintenance and stuff like that, it's a much cleaner way of doing it. So we'll get a quote to do that. I talked to Amundson, who's doing the concrete work for the project this year, and they're very interested in doing the sidewalk work this fall yet. So we'll get some quotes and see what we can get done.
Cool. Looks like they're, they're obviously shut down today because of the rain, but it looks like they're rolling along pretty good. I don't know what, where they're.
Yeah, I think the weather's been pretty good for them lately. I couldn't tell you exactly where they're at. I haven't had a chance to meet with them.
They finished the sanitary sewer between 9th and 10th today. They worked through the rain, actually.
Well, they did. Oh, great.
Yeah, we got about six tents in that little shop, I guess.
Six tents, you got?
About five, yeah. About five, six tents.
I didn't check mine. Any other?
I see they're paving at the airport.
Yep. I think they're just about done with that.
Good.
Any, any other comments or questions on the City Manager Report? Police Department Service Contract Negotiation Update, that's just kind of a placeholder in case you, Jeff or Brian had anything to update, or Aaron had anything to update us on that?
Oh, I guess we've meet, we've met twice now, and they've, we've agreed to a certain amount of things about officers, what they need to staff it and give us the services that we previously had. And we're going to meet again this coming Monday, I believe, right?
Right.
And then to negotiate our rate. And after that, we should be probably coming back to the meeting or requesting maybe a special media mayor to take action on that. Seems to be, everything seems to be flowing fairly decently. So I did notice that we are getting a little bit of notoriety out there. I think it hit the national stage. And I think the word "defund" was used, and that is incorrect. We are not defunding our police department. We are going with the Sheriff's Department, so that would not be a defunding. But everything seems to be going fine. Would you like to add something?
Equipment-wise, I think we pretty much have agreed, or it sounds like transferring most of our equipment over to them is gonna be a workable. They seem to be interested in taking over pretty much all of our equipment, or the most of it. So I think that's a good thing for us and them. Yeah, we're just, a few details on some of the things we're working on, length of our agreement. You know, we're looking at, instead of maybe having a short one and then redoing it again this fall, to see if maybe we can do something a little longer right away. Just instead of getting a contract and we're talking about sitting down and doing another one at the first of the year, hopefully, we can figure out something and do a longer one. So. I think it's going quite well myself.
And the services, and you mentioned that, Brian, that they're really looking at providing the same type of service that we've been accustomed to in Morris with the police department. That's provided they get their full staff of six extra.
Yes.
Deputies? Because I think that's the biggest thing for the public. I mean, the equipment and whatever is what it's gonna be. But are, I mean, that's the things I've been asked is, well, you know, are we gonna be safe? And yes, there should be somebody.
Yeah, I think, I think, I'm not sure what the public means when they say services, but I think what we're talking about is that, you know, you're gonna have people patrolling. You're going to have people working in the courtroom investigating, you know, arresting people, you know, all the stuff that we've been doing before. You know, all the things that we're doing. So, I mean, I think, I know that's all gonna be done.
Okay, super.
Yep.
A certain number of hours is what we're looking on agreeing with to hopefully maintain our around-the-clock coverage.
Yeah, I think when they talk service, that's what they're talking, are they gonna be able to see someone on patrol, you know?
It may take a little bit to transfer everything and to get manpower on staff. But, yeah, the ultimate goal, as soon as possible, to get up and have the coverage, is similar to what we have had.
Thank you.
And I believe that the coverage is there now. It's just, the Sheriff's Department is just working, putting in some overtime to get that coverage, you know, with the officers that they do have. So I don't really see that we're missing anything, even, even right now. But the Sheriff's Department is, you know, really pitching in and really doing a great job there, so. Yeah, is there, is there anything else? I mean, you got anything that you guys are looking for in our discussions?
They're actually working closely with our police. They're, they're actually working closely with, um, our police department now and as far as, you know, what can you cover and what can't you cover and?
Yep.
That kind of stuff, they're actually working together for that now, good.
And our guys, the two that we have, they're gonna continue to work until the official six month or the short term contract. So when are they done basically is kind of what my question is.
I, I would guess that they would be done when, when they get hired on. I don't believe that we would keep them hired, once we have a contract in place, then they'll be picked up by the sheriff's department. Is that correct, Eric?
I think we'll, what I know right now is I think we'll probably have to, well, hopefully we can keep, uh, Reggie on till the end of the year, um, in a, at least in the name of the chief position. If he's, he'll prob, you know, if he gets hired on with the sheriff's office, he'd be working for them. But part time as the, the chief until the end of the year, cause there's a lot of paperwork and things that need to be transferred, um, up through the end of the year. And only the police chief can do that. It's post requirements and, um, things with law enforcement that, that need to be done in the right way. So that's, uh, it's an orderly transition. As far as any of the other employees, well, you know, I think it's probably gonna be shortly after the contract sign that, um, they'll be, how was the term that, uh, Ann Garing used? They'd be, well, effectively their employment would end anyway at that point.
Yeah, just, just a couple of things. One is that he, he mentioned Ann Garing, um, since, uh, Aaron is the city and county attorney, uh, there may be a conflict interest in, we're trying to negotiate an agreement. And so then we actually reached out to another attorney that does, uh, um, human resources kind of stuff to look over the contract that we're putting together. And, you know, we, we got a lot of notoriety, including the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust read about us in the paper and sent us a notice that before you agree to anything, you have to have us look it over. Cause we're your insurance company and we wanna make sure that you're covered in this process. Uh, obviously it's a sheriff's department and not another, uh, cause they do have jurisdiction if we don't have a police department. The other thing I would just mention is that the county has opened up the position of administrative assistant, records keeper, uh, and they're taking applications. And my assumption is that, you know, the individuals that work for us that do that kind of work are gonna make that application. And then they're gonna vet them out and decide whether or not they're gonna bring them on to the department. The same goes for law enforcement officers. So any, and we still have, I think, uh, I think our probationary officer's done on Thursday. We still have one officer who has not left yet that was being vetted out by another sheriff's department that we anticipate's gonna be leaving. But I would, my assumption is that our law enforcement officers are applying for the sheriff's department jobs. You know, and depending on what happens with that process will dictate probably the timing on where they leave. And even if, even if the chief, uh, leaves and goes to work for the sheriff's department, we've talked about the ability to, uh, kinda watch over what happens left with the police department stuff. You know, because there's gonna be some technical things that have to be taken care of.
Okay, thank you for your report. Any, uh, any questions on, on that from anyone else? Tough times. Any, uh, any other business to come before the council?
Mayor, I do have something.
Yes.
Brian, would you take one and just pass it around? I'll read this when everybody gets a copy of it. I hope everybody sees this as a positive. Uh, I guess I just had some thoughts about how things sort of shook out here. Um, and I'll just wait till everybody gets this before I start reading. And I wanna read this so all the people that are out there that have, that are listening have the benefit of this. But, uh, I'll just go ahead and read it. Uh, following up on recent events surrounding the elimination of the Morris Police Department, it has become apparent to me that we have a communication problem within our organization. Neither the city council nor the city manager should ever get caught in this situation again. Something has to change. If for no other reason than for the benefit of future council representatives and city managers, we all wanna get better at our jobs. Our city attorney, Aaron Jordan, he indicated that city council is responsible for establishing policy with regards to city operations. My belief is the time has come to implement a mechanism which allows the city council an opportunity to evaluate the performance of the city manager. There is no such mechanism in place. If approved, this policy is not to be viewed as a negative thing. It merely serves as a communication tool for the council and the city manager to speak freely in a non-open meeting setting to discuss city operations in general. City Manager Hill has indicated on several occasions that one of his biggest challenges is how he can better interact with the city council. This tool would allow an opportunity to evaluate the city manager's effectiveness while serving as an outlet for the city manager to discuss department issues with the city council. I would like to task our city attorney, Aaron Jordan, to research how this can be accomplished. Again, this should not be viewed as a threatening scary event. There are a lot of moving parts in city government and no city manager should have to go this alone. Just wanted to throw that out there and see what everybody else thinks.
Well, and I, I would just say this, I, I'm fully open to that. We actually used to do performance evaluations and I think you were part of them, if I remember right. The last one we did, I never even got two of them back from the city council. And, and so ideally, if you, if you wanna do that, that's absolutely fine.
Yeah, and I just don't, I just don't want everybody to misunderstand, you know, misinterpret my intentions. Again, Lane, I'm not blaming, placing blame singly on you for how things developed and transpired in the department. And that's, that's not what this is all about. It's not about Blaine Hill and me against Blaine, that's not, that's not what this is. I just, I, I truly believe that, you know, if we'd have an opportunity, at least at a minimum semiannually, to sit down and talk, just maybe something could've got aired that might've prevented the downward spiral, cause spiral of our police department. Cause we know that we had officers leaving. And I personally take responsibility for that too. Because that should've probably sent a flag up to me as well as a sitting, city council representative. You know, if you see people leaving, you know, shame on me for not asking why. And I think we, some of us did ask, but, and, and maybe there was nothing we probably could've done to prevent those officers from leaving. But, you know, I just, I just think it'd be for the better of our, of our city form of government. You know, the city manager, uh, headship that we have, form of government, it gives a lot of authority to the city manager. And of course with that comes a lot of responsibility. And I just think it's an awful big load for the city manager to carry without having an opportunity to talk to us and how these di- different departments are functioning. I don't know if that's, Aaron, something we can do? I, I want your feedback, I don't know.
Absolutely, you can do performance reviews and you should do performance reviews. Um, you know, Blaine does it for all employees under him and all the department heads have their, their employees that they do performance reviews for, so. Yeah, the only person that the city manager answers to is you and you should do, do that, um, regularly. It's a, like you say, it's a good form of communication. It's a good time to, uh, talk about how things are going on and how you can, uh, address things going forward. It's not a negative thing at all. Uh, we do it at the county, everybody does. Um, so, uh, you know, I wouldn't hesitate to recommend doing that. If you want my advice on something more than a, uh, a review, um, I'd need to have a little bit more detail of what you're looking for, I guess.
Well, I just don't know how to frame it and how to really, you know, I mean, do you have a formal evaluation form or something that we could all use as a guide? Something to that effect is kind of what I'm looking for from you on just how to do this. You know, I, I just don't want it to be a, an informal thing where we just sit down and, you know, have a. It, it needs to have some sort of format, I think, so we can have a, an organized constructive, uh, review. So that's kind of what I'm looking for.
Yeah, we typically have a, a form that's a couple of pages long. You, you have both the employee fi- fill it out and then also the employer fills it out. Um, and then you meet in person after it's been completed. And some sections get filled out while you're doing it.
Yeah.
That's typically how it works and we can definitely provide you with forms. I'm sure Blaine's already got forms.
Yeah, we have the format. And it's like, and we, we don't, we don't actually do performance evaluations anymore because what it became was, it came, became a paperwork exercise. And that's what it was. With the city council was a paperwork exercise. That's, a- a- and what I mean by that is you fill one out, I fill one out, we sit down, we talk about if anything comes up. And, and like I said, the last time we did it, I never even got two of them back. Because everybody was happy and when, when you're not happy, that's when all of a sudden now, you know, we should have a mechanism to do this, so let's do one. We can do one, we have the format, we can, we can put it out there, uh, for you to go down and you can take the job description and go through and evaluate on all the different things. I mean, I would welcome, I welcome that, I was the one that implemented the system that we had. And realistically, um, it's time consuming i- in a sense that you have to, you have to be able to facilitate all, all these things being sent out, brought back in and sit down and have the meetings and stuff like that. And, and, um, it, it's a good tool for you to use.
Aaron, is there anything to do with the open meeting laws during this?
I'll have to double check, but for most employees, the.
It'll be, we can do it in a closed session.
If it's a closed session, you, I believe you have to do it.
Yeah, well, I would assume if, yeah, cause if we were, if we were something with a department head with any of that, we'd have to do it in a closed session.
Yeah.
I guess that, that was my concern.
Yeah. I'll double check, but I'm pretty sure that with employee reviews, they have to be closed to protect the employee.
Okay, so with our form of government, we, w- w- we don't have contact with city employees and, and we don't do these things per, for what we're doing. Uh, my concern and, and I believe that why it was, why Blaine probably called it more of a, a paper exercises because how, how do we, how can we put any content, anything? How, how do we know or find out what's going on?
You know, Brian, I, I thought.
If, if, well, I, I mean, I'm just saying, and I understand the laws and I understand what our form of government is and I'm okay with that. I'm just finding out, I know why it was said that way. It's like, okay, we're gonna do this, we're gonna write these, all these things down. But how, how do we know? Uh, you know, we can't talk to anybody, we can't do any of these things, we can't research, you know? If you're going to give an evaluation, you know, this isn't, this isn't like a private business where I can look at the bottom line and say, okay, we're making X amount of dollars. I like it, nobody's quitting, uh, things seem to be running smoothly, alright, fine, I can, I can do that. This is different, this is, this is not like that at all. So I, I, I don't, for me to do that, I, how, how do I find?
I know, Brian, I, I thought about the very thing that you're, you're talking about here. And, you know, Aaron, and that's why I asked the question, you know, Blaine is, um, you know, as, and you said, and you, you advised me that he's acting well within, you know, his rights as a city manager to handle his employees by telling, you know, basically not allowing his, you know, the city employees to come and talk to us. I know that's within the way their charter is set, set, and I know he's acting in, within those bounds. I get that part. But my question is, is it a really a good practice? You know, just because it's in there and it says that's the way you can do things, is it really healthy to have that kind of an environment in a, in a, in city government or any type of business for that matter? Brian, to your, to your point, you know, how can we solicit feedback from an employee if we can't talk to them?
Well, I, I would go, I, I, I'm burying that question, but I agree with not being able to talk to them. I don't, I, I agree with, with Blaine on that situation and I believe with, believe that's why it's put in this form of government. I mean, uh, you're ju- you're just gonna have somebody skipping over the top of Blaine every time they don't like something that's happening and run into one of the five of us and complaining about it.
Well, and I think we.
And that, we, you can't have that, you just can't have it. I'm only, I'm only looking at.
Yep.
What, you know, how would we, how would we do something like that? I'm not arguing the fact that, that, uh, we should be, have that right. I, I don't believe that at all.
Well, here's, here's a thought, Brian, and I don't know how you wanna, I'm just running this by you. You know, we're all smart people sitting here, right? And I'm just gonna throw out a scenario, say I had an employee, a city guy come up to me and he's mad about this. Okay, and I think I would be smart enough to discern whether or not this is something that needs to be moved forward. Most generally, all they're looking for is maybe a voice, someone that they, someone that'll actually listen to them. And I'm not gonna go running to Blaine or I'm not gonna go running to anybody else the second somebody would come up and maybe form a complaint. Cause we get, I'm sure you guys get complaints all the time from constituents about this, that, or the other thing. You have to remember the, the city employees, they are constituents also. They vote us in. So, you know, to that end, I think we owe them something. But, you know, I think we would have to be smart enough to screen what kind of stuff is important and what stuff is not important. But to your point, Brian, you're never gonna get, it's really gonna be hard for us to do an evaluation, like you said. If we don't get some, we, if we don't have, if people don't have the freedom to feel like they can come up and at least talk to us.
Well, I think along the lines of that too though is that there is mechanisms for the employees. They're all, they have unions, they have union reps.
I understand that.
You know, but they have, okay, so they have avenues to go through. So if it isn't that big of a gripe, then, then, and they don't do it, but they wanna say something about it, well then obviously it isn't that big a deal because they have avenues to go through. Blaine has to deal with the union stuff and all the rules and all these things, believe me, there's a ton of them. And he's doing it correctly. And if, and if there's problems, there really is something that somebody has, then they have to take it somewhere. They have to take the action and, and, and do that. So that, that, I don't think that has anything to, to do with that. But I, I just was trying to put, you know, try to say, hey, uh, you know, it's difficult. Other two, and I understand why Blaine said it's, it's a paper activity. If y- you can't put some content to it, or you, it's hard, it's hard. So how, I don't know how to do that.
Well, that's probably why it became, that's probably why it became a paper thing because nobody had, nobody had, uh, you know, nobody, uh, felt that they could come up and approach a city council representative and really tell them what's going on. So that's probably, that's a pretty important part of the communication process we're talking about here. You know, I mean, so I mean, if, if we're gonna do something like this without giving, and I'm not saying it's gonna be successful or unsuccessful, or ir- regardless of how we, what we do there. But I just think it would be, it would open the lines of communication up that are, I think, pretty important. But I don't know, it's.
Is this something that we can work with the League of Minnesota Cities on? Do they have, since we, I mean, or, you know, what is exactly, you talk about you had that in place at one time? Well, I haven't been here long enough to know about that and I don't know who all has been. But it's like, is there a, you know, can they co- can they give us a presentation on here's where, here's how this charter works and here's what you can do and here's what you can do to? Cause I do think that, um, uh, that reviews, that a formalized, formal organized review would be good for a number of reasons, as a positive way to look and see where are we going, where are we heading? What are your frustrations? What would you like to see? Cause I think it's really hard to sit here as a council member and validate some of these things and not have any idea, um, what, what I'm, I'm validating. Okay, you said that's good, okay, good, vote on it. You know, that's really hard for me and we've struggled with that and we've had conversations. And I believe specifically when the police chief was, um, sworn in, Brian, you were concerned about that at that time. We have no idea where, and we'd granted, we had a vetting process then. But again, we have no idea, so we're blind, I mean, somewhat blindly going, okay. And then something comes along big and it's like, oh, didn't see that coming. And then, yeah, you feel kind of like, wow, how, how would've, how would've this helped? So I, I, I can see, you know, where you don't want it to be just an exercise in paper and I don't think it has to be. I think you just, we just have to work at finding a way to do this. And maybe, like I said, at, whether it's the League of Minnesota Cities. the League of Minnesota Cities, they're always saying, reach out. When you go to a conference, they're like, talk to us and charter. Charter counties are different. And so maybe that's where we start looking at it, like if there's a liaison there to, I could go right online now and find somebody and ask a question when, because we all belong to that group.
Well, it is the hardest thing and the, the one thing I would tell you is if, if you had somebody come to you and tell you something and said, I don't want my name brought up, you know that's gonna happen. Now, is that fair to me, for you to have in, in your back pocket a piece of information that you have no idea whether or not that's correct or not?
Right.
You know, if, if, you know, employees can come to me if they're not happy with department heads, they can come and talk to me and they're probably not gonna talk to me. Uh, in this case is a very special case, I think, with the PD. And I can tell you, I went through the process of vetting out all the people that were involved with it. And I guarantee you, you wouldn't have got the same statement that I got from the employees. You know, to find out what's going on, what happened. And there's some things that I, you know, and we talked about this a little bit in the closed door meeting that we had to review my performance on that. You had an opportunity and I know you, you're, you're not happy with the outcome. I'm not happy with the outcome. But that's your opportunity to sit down and take a look at this and say what happened. Because if I didn't know that what was going on, you wouldn't have ever found out what was going on, because people wouldn't have came and talked to you. They didn't even come and talk to me and they had a right to come and talk to me. I think I had one officer that suggested that I talk to the officer. You know, and it was like a very odd moment because I don't go around the chief of police to talk to the officers for the same reason that we're talking about employees not going around the city manager and coming to, talk to you. The other thing is you operate as a group, not as individuals. You operate as a group. That's where you live, is in a city council meeting. So not one individual on the city council has any more authority to go out and deal with issues on their own. And, and that's a difficult thing that I've.
I'm not, I'm not saying that, that we go out there and try to fix it. That's not what I'm saying.
Well, I guarantee you, if they, if, if, if you set it up so employees could go talk to city council members, they're gonna find out which ones are gonna talk to them. And, and they're gonna come and start telling you stuff and, and in the end, you're not gonna be able to vet it all out. You, it's not gonna work. If it doesn't, if you don't have an opportunity, and it's the same thing for me. I can't just be dealing with employees. I have to be very careful how I deal with employees so that I protect their confidentiality. You know, I can't, I can't just start talking about people and I'm very, very, um, careful when I deal with that kind of stuff, because there's some things that happen during this process that were handled within the personnel side of things. And I've mentioned that to you. But the idea that if you want to do a performance evaluation, sit down and talk, you can do it. I can tell you over the years, um, I, I have a city manager newsletter that you get every single meeting. I think I'm on three fifty-seven or three fifty-six for the, the exact reason that we're talking about is I wanted to make sure that you knew the things that I was working on. Every, and how many times did I put in there about law enforcement? We're having, we had another law enforcement officer, we had another law enforcement officer, we had, you know, and so that, that was my attempt to try to get information to you, and then you always have the opportunity to ask me questions and to try to find out what's going on, because I work for you. You know, so, um, I, I think it's a very good tool to use, but it just seemed like everything was going fine and people were happy and I wasn't aware of that. Maybe, I mean, we had some discussions. Yeah, I get amped up sometimes. And, uh, and, and that's my personality and, and, and people, people need to probably swap me and set me back down in my seat and, 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 uh, but then I'm passionate about what we do here and, and I try to look out for the best interest of the city as we're doing stuff, but, uh, performance evaluation is an easy thing to do, but I would, I would, I would caution you to open up the door. And I would tell you that I'm still amazed to know and understand that Morris was one of the first cities in Minnesota to have a city manager form of government. So that city council or that group of people running the city said, we do not want to be the people that everybody comes to, to solve the problems.
Right.
We want to hire somebody to do it for us so we don't have to do it and then we'll watch over that person. And that's really what the charter establishes. Uh, but it's not a good system. I still do not understand how I can possibly come to you to try to let a department head go without having the ability to provide all the necessary information to, to, to help you make a decision on that, because, because that is the one case where hiring and, and letting department heads go has to be ratified by the city council, which is an odd thing. Because there's no mechanism for you to learn about the people that we're looking at or to find out all the information about what happened with that.
You know, Blaine, and that's really what drove me to, to do this, to write this, because I sat in your chair. I put myself in your spot. And I was thinking to myself, you know, it's, it's gotta be, it's a tough spot to be in, first of all, that you got a lot of responsibility, but with that, I asked myself, you have five other people here. How can we better, how can we better interact with you to get better and help you? How can we better help you do your job? Because I look at the responsibilities that you have and it's an awful lot. It's an awful lot for one person to try to, to try to manage effectively. So that's all I was trying to figure out is a way for us to more actively help you do your job. That's all I was getting at here.
You know, one idea I have, and I stress it's an idea, not a recommendation, because I'm not an HR professional. What if you did a, a survey? You know, an employee survey. And have the questions kind of mimic, well, have the questions addressed not just the city manager or uh, one particular thing or the other, but their overall work satisfaction based on a number of different things. So that way, my thought is if you had those survey results, you get, if you saw a pattern, there's multiple answers that are similar on a point of concern. That would be one way to communicate to you and Blaine.
I like that.
This is something that we, we've got an issue with. I don't know that that's a great idea. There might be pitfalls to that. And I would suggest if you were to think about some mechanism like that, you'd talk to maybe it's somebody at the league or an HR professional who's maybe been through that process to, to tell you, yes, it worked, we liked it. Or no, don't do it because this is what ends up happening every time you do it. I don't know.
Right.
It's an idea.
Well, it still would be a communication tool. I mean, you know, again, we're, you have to kind of discern what's just an angry, you know, what's anger and what's valid. And so, but I think that's part of the conversation in the, you know, you tuned to the survey and then that would be part of our conversation. You know, where, where do you see this at? Is this, is this real or is this, I'm, you know, that, that happens all the time in public and, you know, there's always, um, is, is this a real thing or is this somebody who's just not happy at the moment?
Yeah, it would stimulate some talking points for sure and I think that's all, I think that's all Brian was kind of talking about too is, you know, how are we gonna get any kind of feedback so we can form our performance review with?
Right.
I think I'd like that.
Jay, you have a question or?
My question, I just want to make one John Q. Public comment here. I wonder if maybe time to examine the city charter again in relation to other city organizations? And as Blaine said, it was one of the first ones that came up in Minnesota. But there's all kinds of city managers, you know, I worked under a couple of them before I came to Morris. New Long is one. And perhaps, you know, under the guide of the League of Minnesota Cities, you could look at some other charters or organizations of how positioned the city manager operates in other towns and see if you want to, uh, we might, I mean, I've heard rumors of possible retirement. So maybe now would be the time to look if you want to see another mechanism of dealing with the council, the city manager, the city attorney. Maybe it'd be worth a look. But I, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No. Thanks for, thanks for the comment. That, that, that probably does bring up a good point though, that, that this is not something that goes away whether I'm sitting in this chair or Blaine's sitting in this chair or you all are sitting in the, in your chairs. Um, it's, 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 it's a structure that probably needs to be ongoing, you know, for, for everybody. Really doesn't matter who's, who starts it or who, you know, who, who's sitting in whose chair, so. Um, I think that's a good point.
And I think just looking at it is this isn't a, a bashing of anybody or anything, and that's what you've said multiple times. This is just, okay, how can, what can we do to help to make this better so that I'm, this person sitting in this chair is feeling like, okay, I made the best decision I could. The person sitting in your chair, Blaine, is knowing that, yep, this is where it's at, this is what I can tell, this is what we've, we've, I feel comfortable with this too. Um, so that's, yeah. I just, I, I think, and again, I think the League of Minnesota Cities, where the charter starts, is maybe where we need to connect to.
Could we put this in some sort of a form of a motion to get, so we kind of get the ball rolling or is this something you want to just table and discuss again, or what do you think, Mayor?
Well, uh, basically, who, who, who is gonna do what? That's kind of what, where we need to go here. Is this, is this something that we need Blaine to look into? Need Aaron to look into with Blaine, or do we want somebody from the city council to be involved?
I think Aaron and Blaine could figure that out, how it should, you know, because Blaine said he's, he has experience and how it's been before, so.
Yeah.
I think it makes sense.
I know everybody loves meetings, but, uh, one suggestion I might have is, it seems like you, Kevin, and you can, are the most interested in this. Perhaps you could, uh, as a committee, meet with Blaine and come up with, uh, oh, an actionable item for the next meeting that you can have everybody vote on. So that it's not just
Right.
go out and try to find a solution and then it just kind of wanders in the wind until nothing ever gets done.
Right. I'm fine with that. Yep.
Yeah, I like that idea too.
That's fine. I'm retired. I get nothing but time. You can call me up anytime when you visit.
Okay. So would someone like to make that a motion?
Or looking into how to move forward with this?
Yes.
What the motion would be?
Yes.
I'll move on that motion.
I will second that, um, to, uh, have, I, I guess, to elaborate a little bit, to have Kim and and Kevin, um, meet with Blaine or with themselves on, on, uh, um, looking at where we go forward on this uh, semi-annual review of policy or whatever it's good, whatever form it takes.
We call it, yeah.
Anyone would like to add to that or comment? Okay, uh, we have motion and a second. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry. Yeah, great. Get something for next, next meeting hopefully. Any further business to come before the council? Thank you. Enjoy crazy days tomorrow.
Yeah.
Meeting adjourned.